Good evening, welcome to the July 21st 2025 meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Look out and see Manor Commissioner Chad Hutchins. Welcome tonight. Manor Commissioner Calvin Vaughn, welcome. We got a lot of stuff to get done tonight, so we're gonna go ahead and get into it. And I'll be saying the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Anyone, everyone please stand if you can. Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we come to you tonight asking your blessing upon this meeting. Asking your blessings upon everyone in attendance that may get home safely. We ask you tonight to give us wisdom and knowledge to do the business of the county of Surrey. May we make decisions that are pleasing to you and that are in the best interest of the citizens of Surrey County. Again, I ask you to be with us always. These many blessings we ask in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hyatt, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was Bill Goines, if you heard him chime in. Sorry about that, Bill. He's tuning in from around Cape Canaveral tonight, I believe. Did you get to see the launch?
No, they aborted the launch right, right, just about 20 minutes ago, so they aborted the launch. So we didn't get to see it.
Appreciate you tuning in, Willz. We're gonna be coming at you here shortly.
Yes, sir.
All right, next is the approval of June 16th, June 20th, and the recess meeting of June 16th, 2025 meeting minutes. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda. Pretty lengthy deny. We have 14 bullet points on it, so I'm gonna turn it over to County Manager Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the Tax Department end of month summaries, charges, and reports. Next is the appointment of subdivision administrators and review officers for the Development Services Department. Next is the Invest in Surrey discretionary funding requests that were discussed at the last meeting by Commissioner Goines and Commissioner Hyatt. This is the approvals for those. Next is the release of retainage for the Surrey Community College watershed project and the recommendation on how to use those funds. Next are workers' compensation claim and settlement activity approvals from HR. Next is the workers' compensation annual renewal. Next item is the mechanical preventive maintenance agreement. This is for the detention center and it's with Stanley Heating and Air. Next is a position reclassification and DSS. Next item are the home health services changes related to PTRC and Yvettey. Next is the position creation and reclassifications that were approved in the fiscal year 26 budget for DSS and the Sheriff's Office. Next is an error correction in the FEMA Hurricane Helene grant project ordinance. Next item is our budget amendment number one here at the first meeting in fiscal year 26. This is related to the COSAP grant, which is Department of Justice and opioid settlement funds received. Next item is the micro purchase threshold resolution. This is to align with the $30,000 threshold that the state currently has in place. And finally, there's a surplus vehicle request to transfer from the Sheriff's Office to facilities. And that's the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chris. All right, any, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is our special recognitions. Tonight we have two different ones, Safe Kids Surrey Coalition and Student Artwork Health and Nutrition Center. So we'll call up, we'll do the Safe Kids first. Just wait until we call you up.
I'll wait till we're here. Robin, I'm gonna call all these up one at a time and then let you speak a few minutes about this, okay? No, they're not gonna leave you. They're coming too. You're just the fearless leader. I'm gonna call each of you up and then read the certification because they're all the same, okay? So we have Robin already here, Sally Reese, Tess Brant. Tess Brant, is she here? Tess Scott, Wendy Wood, Alex Wilkins, Ally Willard, Bristol Mitchum, Captain Teresa Knox, Chief Kevin Wilson, Daniel Brooks, Danielle Davis Stanley, Myron Waddell. He's good choice. We got all kinds of things going on here. Here's Myron's. Jalen Hernandez, Leah Waddell, Lieutenant Todd Wilson, Lieutenant William Roundtree.
Y'all can come over here somewhere.
Lindsay Moose.
I don't bite.
And the last one is me, so I'm gonna read. And Chad Hutchins. Chad, I don't have yours, but come join us anyway because you're part of this team.
Probably didn't read my email.
So now I'm gonna read what we've called all these wonderful people up here. But the county of Surrey recognizes these individuals and has hereby presented a certificate of recognition for demonstrating an extraordinary commitment to injury prevention, going above and beyond to serve all kids in Surrey County through your involvement as a member of Safe Kids Surrey County Coalition. Presented this day, the 21st of July 2025, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion Chairman, Bill Goines Vice Chairman, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, and Van Tucker. Robin, would you like to say a few words about this group and the work that you do? Come on over, sir, I can hear you.
Um, this, I have to go down because I'm shorter, sorry.
Come on.
Yeah. I just want to thank this group, and we're probably missing about 15 or 20 more. Some Safe Kids Surrey's been around for a long time, but we have really made a lot of accomplishments in this last year. And our state representative, Alex Wilkins, is here from North Carolina, Safe Kids. And recently, our coalition was recognized as the statewide Coalition of the Year. And it's because of all the work between local private, nonprofit, county government, local citizens, combined in all the cities and municipalities, all of us working together to keep kids safe in Surrey County through the hot temperatures, displays that you've seen, gun locks, medication lock boxes, water safety. What else, guys? Safe sleep is really important. So if you need a presentation or you want to learn more about Safe Kids, contact any of us up here. I just want to thank the county and everybody for, and all the members for putting all the time and efforts. And car seats, number one thing, car seats, right? That we do that. And all our SROs are now trained to put in car seats safely. And we thank the support from the state for the grants they give us and the opportunities. We couldn't do that. Another thing is I know you're getting ready to vote on the Invest Surrey, and I just want to thank all the commissioners for giving back to the community and for what you've established in our Child Advocacy Center, which is more work that we're all doing together, and I'll be glad to come back and share that at another time. But thank you all for being a part of the coalition.
Also, we failed to recognize that Robin is also a commissioner of the Dobson Board.
Oh, did you? I said, they know what town they're in. It's okay.
I was focused on recognizing. Yeah, thank you all for the great jobs you do and, you know, it's kind of like a lot of jobs we have in the county. It's a calling. We do it for the children, adults, you know, adults can learn from this. So thank you all. Let's give them a nice sound. Y'all got, come on in.
You're welcome.
Come on in.
You're a smart group. If you're shorter, you need to be in front. If you're taller, you need to be in the back. Wow, that worked out really well. See, smart group. Love it. All right. Bill, wherever you are, smile, Bill. All right, everybody looking at me, ready? Another, another, two more. Big smile, ready? Here we go. Done. Congratulations.
Thank you. Wait a minute, we got one more. Another big one. Okay, the next presentations are for the artwork down in the Health Department. Where did that thing go? Did you send that with me? Okay, this is from Samantha Ainge, Director at the Health Department. After completing a major renovation at the Surrey County Health and Nutrition Center, we were thrilled to celebrate with a meaningful artistic addition. We chose iconic landmarks from across Surrey County and invited high school art teachers to recommend talented students to bring these scenes to life. Advanced art students embraced the challenge, painting each landmark in vivid acrylics on three by four foot canvases. Their creativity and commitment have resulted in stunning works that will be cherished by our community for years to come. We couldn't be prouder of these young artists. We are deeply grateful for the time, passion, and talent they invested into this project. And when they had the open house at the Health Department, I did go around and and I started taking pictures of the artwork before they even said that it was from the students. Then it said, when it's from the students, it really did put a new whole meaning to it. So there's some beautiful artwork. If you haven't been down there, I'm sure they'll be glad to show you around. Would y'all want to say anything about it? Come on up.
It was a committee that came up with the idea for us to showcase student artwork. And what we did was come up with a couple of landmarks around the county and let students choose from those landmarks. We just provided the materials and they dedicated a lot of time to make that happen. There are, we sent them a slideshow of it, but if you get a chance, you should definitely come and view it. There's everything from Molly Service Station, Shelton Vineyards, an old Rockford Church, Pilot Mountain in different seasons, rural roads. So it really focuses on all parts of the county to represent all the people of the county. And they did a phenomenal job of representing our county very well. So I encourage you all, when you visit the Surrey County Health Nutrition Center, to check out their artwork. And we're gonna recognize, we invited all the students, but as you know, summer is hard to get students to check their school email and want to do school-related stuff, so there's not a lot of them here. But we are very grateful for the talents of all of the students who participated in this art project for us.
And you're gonna make sure that all these get these certificates.
Yes, I will. I will hand deliver to all the schools that are not represented.
At least 30 some of them.
You want me to go first? Okay. Irina Beck, Manor High School. I have the Manor High School students. Ellie King, Cassidy Moore. Each of these are different, so I'm gonna read those because they have a little bit of information. If you'll come around to this side, dear, a little bit of information about the work that they did. Cassidy, come over here with me, honey. Cassidy Moore, Manor High School, has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for embracing the challenge of bringing a rolling river of the iconic landmark of Surrey County, a life of vivid acrylics to enhance the walls of Surrey County Health Nutrition Center. Your stunning work will be cherished by the citizens of Surrey County for years to come. Presented the 21st day of July 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion Chairman, Bill Goines Vice Chairman, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, and Van Tucker. Thank you, Cassidy. Your artwork is absolutely beautiful. I have had the opportunity to see it. Sadie Roach. Sadie here. Okay, I'm gonna give these to you. These are the remaining ones.
All right, a lot of the artwork, I don't know whether you said it a minute ago, but took, some of them, it's three or four students worked on the same project. And some of them, four or five students, right? So there's several of them and talented young folks. Alondra Bueno, Hallie Quarter. These are from Millennium Charter. River Edge. That's a cool name. Zoe Harris. Zoe Park. Hannah Lefwitch. Renee Marion, my niece. Ava Stires. Haley Woodcock. Everybody had other places to be, didn't they? Ava McMillan. Here we go. We got a winner. She's from North Surrey High School. Ava from North Surrey has presented this certificate of recognition for embracing the challenge of bringing Cap's Mill, an iconic landmark in Surrey County, to life in vivid acrylics to enhance the walls of the Surrey County Health and Nutrition Center. Your stunning work will be cherished by the citizens of Surrey County for years to come. Presented this the 21st day of July 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goines, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, and Van Tucker. Congratulations. Israel Rodriguez and Lauren Willard. Got them good mixed up. Go through them here. Okay, these are Ilkin High School. Bailey Ray, Cameron Lamb, Savannah Leahy, Avaya Morrison, Lauren Shore, Caroline Sowers. Nobody likes me tonight. Got a good name, though.
I'll read this, I'll read this since, these are for East Surrey High School students and it's it's, I think they're the same except for, aren't they, Mark?
No, they all done different drawings.
Yeah, but this is, well, no, there's some for different ones, but most of them look like they're the same. But anyway, for the pilot knob, it's a certificate of recognition for the students there participating for embracing the challenge of bringing pilot knob, an iconic landmark to life in vivid acrylics to enhance the walls of the Surrey County Health and Nutrition Center. Your stunning work will be cherished by the citizens of Surrey County for years to come. Presented this 21st day of July 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goines, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, Van Tucker. Leilani Kreske. Nope. Same award, same. This one is for the East Surrey High School student and bringing in art form pilot in winter. And this is for Lucas Cun, maybe Lucas, Lucas Coon, maybe. Again, for pilot knob, Nicole Letton. Pilot in winter, Mia Sands. Got a winner? Come on up, Mia. Great. I'm just gonna read yours, Mia. How you doing? Come on up. This certificate is presented to you, Mia Sands, student at East Surrey High School, as a certificate of recognition for embracing the challenge of bringing pilot in winter to life in vivid acrylics to enhance the walls of Surrey County Health and Nutrition Center. Your stunning work will be cherished by the citizens of Surrey County for years to come. Your award tonight is presented this 21st day of July 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goines, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, and Van Tucker. And thank you very much. Let's give her a big round of applause. East Surrey High School also, Cassidy Simmons. Nope. And East Surrey High School, again, this is the Shelton Vineyard theme. Andrew Woods. Nope. Oh, good, good. Come on up, Andrew. Thank you for coming tonight. Andrew, this is a certificate of recognition for embracing the challenge of bringing Shelton Vineyard, an iconic landmark to life in vivid acrylics to enhance the walls of Surrey County Health and Nutrition Center. Your stunning work will be cherished by the citizens of Surrey County for years to come. You were presented this award tonight, July the 21st, by Mark Marion, Bill Goines, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, and Van Tucker, the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, sir. Another East Surrey High School, Madeline Andro, Kylie Carpenter, and Audrey Hyatt. Oh, got Audrey. Is that Audrey? Come on up, Audrey.
She had a good name.
Yes, she does. And this one is also a Shelton Vineyards Award presented to you, Audrey Hyatt. Thank you for coming tonight. How you doing? Good. For embracing the challenge of bringing the Shelton Vineyard, an iconic landmark to life in the vivid acrylics to enhance the walls of Surrey County Health and Nutrition Center. Your stunning work will be cherished by the citizens of Surrey County for years to come. You're presented this award tonight, July the 21st, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goines, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hyatt, Van Tucker, and congratulations and thank you so very much.
Looking good. Bill, are you smiling wherever you are? That joke wasn't that funny the first time. All right, good job. Thank you all.
All right. Yeah. It'll all be all right. All right, next on our agenda is the open forum. This time you'll have three minutes. You'll come up and state your name and telephone number. You can have about three minutes to talk just about anything you want to talk about. So come on up. We have any takers. Larry Johnson, 336-401-0723. We know where to find you. All right, that's the reason I'm here tonight for that too. I personally want to make a public thank you to Surrey County Government for going along with what Parks and Rec does for our Special Olympics, our special needs folks here in Surrey County. I'm amazed by the recognitions y'all made tonight. I am
I am, I'm blessed to live in Surrey County, and I think every Surrey Canyon should feel the same way, for all the volunteers and for all the things, and to hear that we're top in the state and all these things is, is just wonderful. And that goes along for, uh, Special Olympics of Surrey County. Just a few months ago, they took over 60 Olympians to Raleigh for the state games. All of them came back winners. And, uh, not, not long after that, they had a little special party for those that attended, a little pizza party, and to, to surprise of two, two of these athletes, a swimmer and a bowler, they were selected to, to go to Minneapolis, Minnesota, next summer for the National Games. And, uh, to, and that was the reason for the party or for the get together. And most of those athletes, you know, came, uh, for that, not knowing what was going on. My purpose for being here tonight, other than thank you for what you do, is that it takes money for these things to happen, for them to travel and to eat and all around everything, but I'm not asking for any money from you tonight, but I want you to know that we have a yearly fundraiser, which is a golf tournament held in, in the late September, uh, and also a, a raffle going along with it. Parks and Rec works so hard in all of their businesses that they do with Parks and Rec Recreation, and also the Special Olympics folks through, uh, Easter egg hunts and Halloween parties and proms and all these different things they do, and also, they do quite a bit of work with the seniors in the county also. But I want y'all to know that I volunteered, they work so hard, that I volunteered to head up the fundraising this year, and, uh, and we're going at it very hard. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, wonderful. I just want y'all to know that Chairman Marion is part of our team, uh, he's part of Parks and Rec, one of his assignments as Commissioner, but he's ab, actively involved in our fundraising, and he has things that y'all might need, uh, to, if you would like to sponsor, help sponsor, or even contribute some fashion or form to the raffle. And then I'm standing here, facing y'all, but everybody behind me and everybody that's viewing in tonight, uh, as Commissioner Marion says, you know where to find me. We, we appreciate any help financially, or even volunteers to help us make this happen. And again, I'm blessed to live in Surrey County, and thank y'all again.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate you. Anyone else? All right, we will close the open forum, and next, I want to introduce Calvin Vaughn, Mount Airy Commissioner.
Good evening, uh, Calvin Vaughn, 600 Merritt Street, Mount Airy, North Carolina. Uh, let me begin by giving the honor to you, Mr. Chairman, and the Commissioners, and to the County Manager, the Clerk of the Board, and to the Attorneys, and to the staff. Uh, appreciate all of you do, all that you do, you make a big difference. Uh, for many years, a friend and a colleague of mine, Adrian Calhoun, some of you may know her, she's the Director of the AG, uh, Services, it's been about Tribe Council of Governments. She has done everything she could to get me to be on some board, or some committee. And last year, uh, she was after me and then got Bob Cleveland involved as well, and they wanted me to be a Senior Tar Heel Legislature. I said, I really believe in that program and I support it, but I do not have time, but I know someone who can. And, uh, it is a US Army veteran of 25 years, uh, has a Master's in Ed, uh, Education, three grown children, and just a delightful lady, a delightful person, and I said, I believe she'll make you a good Senior Tar Heel Legislature. So, I present to you Betsy McPhail, the S- Surrey County Senior Tar Heel Legislature.
Thank you.
The Commissioners, City Manager, and Staff. First, I want to thank you for everything that you do. As for seniors in our community and for your dedication to the Surrey County Senior Tar Heel Legislature Program, your commitment makes a lasting difference in the PTRC, the Area Office on Aging, Y-Vetti, and Transportation, the Department of Social Services, and the Health Department, and all who serve our seniors. It has become an honor to serve as your Senior Tar Heel Legislator, advocating, educating, and supporting the seniors of Surrey County. But it wasn't so fun or happy at the beginning when Calvin approached me and said, I have this position on the North Carolina Legislature, State of North Carolina Legislature, that I think you would be perfect at. And all I could think of, oh, the North Carolina Legislature, oh, the state, let's see, it'd probably be travel, or tourism, or beautification, or you know what, it'd probably be something really good. And I thought about traveling all over North Carolina, doing all these wonderful things. And finally, he said, Betsy, it's the Department of Aging. Uh, aging? How old do you think I am? And it turns out, if you look at the Department of Aging, and aging is really starts at 50, and it ends at like 80 or 85, and I thought, well, I'm almost past that age. I mean, I've out, outyeared the years. So, the last six months have really been very interesting for me and very rewarding. Um, we have done some things together, and I just want to let you know that this senior legislature is a very important position to have, and I'm very honored to really have it, not that I'm aging, but that I do have, uh, have this position. But I want to share with you little things that we have done together as the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and it is making a difference. A few months ago, we were approached, uh, by a senior who wanted to know about the lines on 601, and I don't know if y'all paid any attention to them, but 601 from the shopping center to the intersection of 52, the lines have faded, and if you're there at night, or if you're there in a rainstorm, you can't really see if, what lane you're in. So, Calvin and I contacted Senator Eddie, um, um, help me with here. That's right, Settle. And he gave us the name of a Michael Poe, who is in charge of the Department of Transportation. And we called him, and he gave us the name of Michael Poe, who is in charge of transportation. And I don't know if you've noticed it, but the lines are painted now. So, it just goes to show, if we work together, we can get things done. They're not perfect, because we did call Mike, Michael Poe, and told him that some of the lines weren't right and some stuff, so he has accepted an invitation from us to come up here for lunch, and we're going to take him to some places that we think need. And if you have a, a particular place that you think might need some lines or something drawn, please let, uh, us know, and we will try to address it. But also, in the last six months, we have participated in some local events, such as the Health Fair at the Mount Airy Senior Citizen, where we heard firsthand from seniors about their needs. Many shared how essential a senior center is. I never realized about a senior center, because I didn't know I was one until lately, when I was told I was an aging group. But anyway, they provide access to health services, vital resources, and opportunities to stay active and engaged. I want to tell you that Carolyn Gentry is wonderful. She's a great director, and the little bit of time that I have spent at that center, it's very rewarding, and we should be very proud and pleased that we have Carolyn Gentry, who is in charge of it. Also, I have attended, Calvin and I attended some meetings in Raleigh with key stakeholders in the Aging, Aging, I don't like that word, Network, and with legislators. We have joined three meetings at the Piedmont Tribe Council of Governments to advocate for our seniors. And I am available, and also Calvin, and when he has time, to go anywhere in Surrey County to hear the concerns and needs of our seniors. And I'm gonna address elderly, or whatever that from now on, seniors, because elderly sounds like some kind of a disease, and I don't want to have it. So, senior citizens deserve programs that support their independence, safety, and their well-being, and I am committed to lobbying for them. Your support fuels our ongoing efforts. Your input and support encourages the work for our seniors. I ask that you share with me any concerns and ideas you may have, so that together we can build a healthier, safer, and more connected community for our seniors. I look forward to continuing this vital work for you and our seniors. Together, we can make a real and meaningful progress. Together, thank you for all that you've done, and I want to thank you again for your commitment and generosity, and God bless us all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McPhail. And don't hurt Calvin later on, okay? All right, thank you. And, and next on the agenda is Penny Harrison, Tax Administrator. Request to sell, schedule sale of tax foreclosures. Good evening, Penny.
Good evening. I have, uh, six pieces of property that I would like to propose for schedule of tax sale. They should have, I made packets for everyone. I'm hoping you've had time to review them. I wanted to make sure, um, you have, if you have any questions or anything like that. I, um, went to each piece of property. The first one, I don't know if you want any details, you just let me know what you would like to, any type of details. I can explain on the first one, if you'd like. Actually, there's, there's nine properties, but it's six different sales. Let me explain it better. Here we go. Thank you. The first one has, uh, two parcels, has buildings and farm equipment on it. The second one is abandoned. Um, there are signs out there for no trespassing. The second one, I mean, the third one has, um, a house and does have some mobile homes and campers on it. The fourth one, uh, is, is vacant land with road frontage. The fifth one is, uh, vacant land with road frontage. And the sixth one is, um, vacant land with, and it does have a unpaved road access to the, to the piece of property. I did check that, because it's, the piece of property is behind the, the piece of property that is, is behind some property that's with the road frontage. If that makes sense? Yes, it does have an easement.
One of the questions I have is, in five and six.
Okay.
Shaw airs, tax value is 5670, and a proposed opening bid 12,300, that's for number five. And number six is tax value 4,800, and the o- proposed opening bid's 9,000. Can you tell me why that is?
Yes, um, we have to advertise in two different newspapers, and the advertising is very expensive. Or both.
Other parcels, so...
Penny, before we take any action, can you, for public consumption purpose, explain to those here and listening at home, how these folks have been notified of the fact of their delinquencies, and things such as that, that got you to this point?
Yes, we have sent numerous statements, um, before it even gets to a foreclosure point. Um, the board will, um, not allow anything like this until they are five years behind. So, uh, we will send a original notice, a, uh, final notice before advertising, we will send, uh, real property, uh, delinquent notices, uh, we will garnish their, um, wages, we will try to levy their bank account, we'll do everything possible before we will actually try to foreclose their property. And then, um, the foreclosure attorney will send a demand letter trying to work out something with them before they actually foreclose the property. So, yes, ma'am.
That's, uh, that's good information, and again, the last thing I believe, I've been on this board a little while, and the last thing we want to do is foreclose on a piece of property. We go to great extents and great lengths to do everything possible to collect these taxes, and you mentioned five years, we don't even consider going to foreclosure with our group that we've contracted with, the Cana Law Firm up in Asheville, North Carolina, until we are five years, it, hopefully, we get started pretty quickly after that, but five years, and I've seen a few, or more, behind in collections. And the reason the five-year mark is important is by a North Carolina statute, after five years, you can't even collect, you can't even legally go after the, it's a 10 years, I believe, 10, after 10 years. So, we start, we start somewhere between five and 10, and it's not always, we've not always been proficient right up to the mark on the five, but we start between five and 10, because after 10, you can just write them off, you can't even collect them. Uh, so, but if you wait to the last minute, then we found that sometimes you don't collect also. So, we start these process, this process with these folks, and we do it very reluctantly, and it's the last thing, not the first thing.
No.
This County Board of Commissioners and our Surrey County Tax Department desires, and that is, we don't want to go down the foreclosure road. It's very expensive, everybody loses a little bit, and, uh, but for the citizens of Surrey County, that is our obligation to see after so many years that people do in fact pay their property taxes, and it's our responsibility and yours at the Tax Department to see that those taxes are collected. So, just wanted to add that and say, it's always with great reluctance that we get this far, but you feel like all that process has been followed in each and every one of these six cases tonight? We've gone to every extent and every, uh, option with the Cana Law Group to see that we have tried to collect taxes and, and have decided we cannot.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, the, you've got one in there that's a little less than two tenths of an acre, uh, .18 down there on 268 at Elkin. Um, is, I've been by there, it don't, it don't look like it's worth a whole lot for anything, really, not big enough to, to do anything with, but di- did, did you send letters to the adjoining property owners? Because I know we used to do that.
Um, the Cana Law Firm does that, and they also put it on the website, they have a marketing type of, uh, group inside their department that, um, notifies people around that area.
Yeah, well, yeah, and so they did send letters to the adjoining property owners?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're sure about that?
I will double check it.
Okay, if you would, double check.
They probably haven't yet, because they're gonna try to work something out with the landowner, you know, to pay the taxes.
Understand.
They have, yeah.
Right.
I will, I will double check tomorrow, um, and I will let you know first thing.
Because in most cases, it's worth more to an adjoining landowner than it is to, and not everybody goes to websites and looks for these things, I mean, I certainly don't, but, yeah. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we proceed, uh, if everybody's sure that all measures have been taken, uh, to request the scheduled sale of these tax foreclosures as presented by Surrey County Tax Director, Ms. Penny Harris.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Hyatt. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Dan Barrett.
Good evening.
Good evening. Come on over here. Yes. Got to make sure you're, you're heard here.
We're here to, uh, request you engage in a public hearing pursuant, as the governing body of the Northern Hospital District of Surrey County, in accordance with NCGN Stat Sections 131E-147 and 130E-13.
Thank you. We will now open up a public hearing on the resolution to lease, sell, convey, or affiliate Northern Regional Hospital. Is anyone here tonight to speak on that? No takers? All right, I will now close the public hearing. And we will now close our, uh, recess our regular meeting and go into recess for Northern Hospital District of Surrey County. And we will be back in just a few moments. Bear with us. Thank you. Thank you. Sir. Oh, yeah. Before we, before we go into closed, closed session, we need to vote on that. So.
Chairman, there's an agenda there for the Northern Hospital District meeting.
Okay.
Direction, Mr.
We need to do this before we go into closed.
Okay, follow the agenda.
Okay, we will now approve the agenda of the Northern District, Northern Hospital District of Surrey County.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Goins, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the approval of May the fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We're back in session with the Northern Hospital District of Sari County. And we're going to read a resolution. Resolution declaring the intent of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Sari, North Carolina, seating as the Governor of the State of New York. North Carolina, sitting as the governing body of Northern Hospital District of Surrey County, to exercise its right to become the sole owner of Hospice of Surrey County Incorporated. And I'd like to call Dan Barrett to read the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Resolution states as follows. Whereas Hugh Chatham Memorial Hospital and Northern Hospital District of Surrey County adopted a joint resolution effective October 1st, 2005, memorialized consolidation of hospital services in Surrey County and other areas served by Hospice of Surrey County, Inc. And whereas, so to the joint resolution, the two members of hospice are Hugh Chatham and Northern, each of which have a 50% ownership interest in hospice. And whereas, the joint resolution contains a change in control of a member provision, which provides that in the event a change in control of a member, the member for which control has not changed shall have the absolute right to become the sole member of hospice, paying to the member for which a change of control has occurred, an amount determined by the two members to be equal to 50% of the net asset value of hospice upon the effective date of the change of control. And whereas for Hugh Chatham, a change of control is defined in the joint resolution as any change in which Hugh Chatham is no longer controlled by itself perpetuating community governing board. And whereas, on July 1st, 2025, H.M. Wake Forest Baptist Center became the sole member of Hugh Chatham, such that Hugh Chatham is no longer controlled by itself perpetuating community governing board. And whereas, under the joint resolution, upon a change of control, to exercise its right to become the sole member of hospice, the member for which control has not changed must provide written notice of its demand, become the sole member of hospice within 30 days of the change of control, or the receipt of notice of the change of control from the member for which control has changed, whichever date is later. And whereas, Northern wishes to timely exercise its contractual right, become sole member of hospice due to the change of control, Hugh Chatham. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners, the County of Surrey, North Carolina, resolves as follows. Number one, Surrey County Board of Commissioners, sitting as the governing body of Northern Hospital District, hereby approves the exercise by Northern Hospital District of its right to become the sole member of hospice. Chairman, the Surrey County Board of Commissioners will notify Hugh Chatham as chairman of the Board of Trustees and chief executive officer in writing of Northern Hospital District's demand to become the sole member of hospice. Northern Hospital District will pay Hugh Chatham an amount determined by Hugh Chatham Northern, or by a third party or arbitrator if agreement cannot be reached, to be equal to 50% of the net asset value of hospice upon the effective date of the change of control. Northern will make payment to Hugh Chatham to become the sole member of hospice within 90 days following agreement for determination of the amount to be paid. Adopted this 21st day of July, 2025, Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Martin Marion, titled Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Attest Andrew Wright, Clerk to the Board.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution declaring the intent of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners of North Carolina, sitting as the governing body of Northern Hospital District of Surrey County, to adopt this resolution and exercise its right to become the sole owner of Hospice of Surrey County, Inc.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Goins, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We will now make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Harris.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, we've adjourned the Northern Hospital District of Surrey County, and will now open up the meeting for the Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Goins, Chairman.
I'll call the meeting to order. Our first agenda item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Marion, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a financial update by Laura Neely.
Okay, in front of you, except for, I'm sorry, Bill, not in front of you. You have a budget report, and this is through the end of June for the airport. The first page are the revenues. And as of right now, through the end of June, the revenues are at 95.7% of budget. And they are sitting at $937,153.87. And if you flip over to the next page are the expenses. And the expenses are currently sitting at 89.7% of budget, at $878,184.31. We are still getting a few expenses trickling in here and there, and we'll continue to monitor those through the end of July, some that are for June invoices. Overall, we're looking pretty good in the airport. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next is approve, approve moving forward with the flight school, George Crater.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had interviewed and we had talked with Talon Aviation. We felt very confident that they would, that they'd be a really good fit with us at the airport. I know that we're not ready to complete, but, but we, they are looking forward to it. The time we exit our current terminal building to take over that. And we would like to get approval from the board to move forward with starting to work on a specific lease with this firm, Talon Aviation, to provide flight school services at our Mount Airy Surrey County Airport. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer, but.
Can you just mention they are established and how many areas?
Yes, yes, you know, they've got four instructors, three airplanes. They've been, I think, for five years, a little bit over five years. They're ready to move, you know, they've already wanted to put a plane up there. They're renting hangar space from us now, which you don't have to have, be in a, have the flight school there to rent space. But they want to put a hangar up there, they've got instructors up here. They're, like I've said, they, they do a really good job. They're moving a lot of students, and we're excited that we think this will be a lot of traffic at the airport. And the, one of the other pieces that we've been trying to get put together up there.
The, where is their home base?
They're out of Twin Lakes, out of Davie County right now.
Okay.
But it's.
How many flight schools do they have and where are those located?
Now, their, their main base, where they're based out of is Davie County. They're wanting, they will leave a plane down there because they've got an instructor that lives like two minutes from the airport, but they're wanting to move, they're going to move the other two planes up and to our airport if, if the board so agrees to it. And then we'll work on a temporary lease for now, a hangar rent, and then the lease of the building and a cost on it when we, like I said, when we leave the current terminal and move to the new one.
And you, you, it's, yeah, this motion in negotiations, right?
Right.
What you're looking for is to be able to sit down and start negotiations for a contract?
That is correct, yes, sir, and that we need, I need to get that approval from the board. Just, we make a recommendation to the board to work with these, these folks because they, they just seem, they just, they buy a lot of fuel from us anyway.
And at some date in time after these negotiations, if you still felt good about things, you would come back for contract approval?
That's correct, and we would have a, if you allow us to, we would start now and then come, then we bring a preliminary back and let the authority review it and make any revisions that you see fit or ask any questions about it, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we instruct our George Crater to begin negotiations for a one-year contract with Talon Aviation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Height, any discussion? If, if not, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Thank you, that's all that I have, unless the board has any questions. Thank you.
All right. Our next scheduled meeting will be September 15th, 2025. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Mount Airy Surrey County Airport Authority meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Tucker, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Goins. We will now reconvene our regular meeting. And up on the agenda is Laura Neely, Finance Officer. Welcome, Laura, since this is your last meeting with us. As Finance Officer, we wanted to hold you to the whole, to the end, so.
That's fine, I understand.
Before you get started, I just want to say congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
And I hope it works well with you and your family, and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much, you all have been wonderful. Here at Surrey County and with all of you guys, thank you for everything, thank you. I put a financial report at each of your desks, and it is through the end of June. And just keep in mind again that we will see revenue and expenses trickle in probably through the end of this month. In the general fund, the revenue is currently sitting at 82.7% of budget, at $91,099,265. I want to bring your attention to the sales tax line. That number in revenue to date of 21 million is through the third quarter. We have through the end of March, and we are right on target at 75.3%. So I anticipate that we will meet budget there. So we should get 7 million more in between April to June. So once we get that in, we should be looking pretty good with our sales tax, and we should meet the budgeted number. Our property tax, motor vehicle tax, and prior year's taxes and fees, those are all over budget. Motor vehicle tax itself is at 121.5% of budget, so that is very impressive. And property tax at 102.4% of budget. They continue to do a great job at the tax department. Down in the expenses for the general fund, they are currently sitting at 91% of budget, and that number is $100,261,011. And the revenues will catch up with the expenses as we see that sales tax. And again, the fund balance number, we did have to revise that, the general fund fund balance, but that was for invest in Surrey and some professional services throughout the year. But I anticipate that our revenues will meet our expenses. On the backside, we have the landfill fund. The revenue for the landfill fund for the sale of recyclables and landfill operations, revenue to date is $4,112,433. And the expenses for landfill operations, debt service, and waste collection and recycling is $4,374,119. In our bank account total, we have about 58,372,704.07. And here in July, August, we're going to see a big uptick in that as we start to get property tax collections in. But overall, I think we're looking pretty good. But we'll know more, of course, as we get into the audit and things get pulled back. Does anyone have any questions?
Those sales tax numbers remind me when those come in.
Let's see, well, we should get by September, we should have a better picture of everything. Depending on, let's see, the end of September, that second meeting in September, first meeting in October, we should know where we stand with our overall total sales tax collections. Thank you.
Looking good. Big kudos to our, all our citizens, taxpayers. I believe we budgeted 98%, right?
97%, it was 97%, 97 and a half.
Seven and a half, okay, that, those numbers look really good, and kudos to the citizens. Any more, any questions for Laura?
I'd just like to say, Laura, thank you for your service to Surrey County. We've enjoyed working with you, you've done a really good job, and we wish you only the very, very best. And of course, hate to see you go, but wish you Godspeed and wish you well in your new job.
Thank you so much. Thank you all, I've really greatly enjoyed working here, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're gonna have a longer drive every day.
Yeah, I know, you know, I could still park here and walk over there.
And you are going to the Surrey County Public School, is that correct?
I am, yes, sir.
I'm sure we'll still get to see a whole lot of you.
Yes, we'll still be working together, and I look forward to working with the new finance officer here, whoever they are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Now I'll turn it over to Chris Knopf, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a moment, I'll ask you to open up a public hearing for an economic development project titled Project Freedom. And I'll let Blake Moyer come up during the hearing and give you the particulars about the project. What you have before you is a proposed cash grant incentive to consider. As you can see, there's a variable investment project of 3.5 million. What you have is an 80% cash grant over five years. That's 80% of taxes paid, that's how that's calculated. So total tax payments estimated to be just over 62,000. And the cash grant would be $49,691 rounding up. You have a resolution that's been, we placed one at each of your seats. So following a public hearing, it's the board's will, they can adopt this resolution that would set in motion process by which the county attorney would begin to draw up a contract with Project Freedom. So, Mr. Chairman, if you will, to open up the public hearing and get Mr. Moyer up here to get us started.
Right, we will now open up a public hearing for Project Freedom. Do we have any speakers on that tonight? Welcome, Blake Moyer.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for having me tonight, Blake Moyer, Surrey County Economic Development Partnership. I just want to give a little bit of context about Project Freedom. This is a manufacturer in the city of Mount Airy inside of the city limits. Last Thursday, we approved incentives at the City of Mount Airy's City Council meeting on Thursday night. One, for the similar type of deal you all are looking at, but then two, they are going to be applying on behalf of the company for a NC Commerce building reuse grant, so just more color for you. This employer employs more than 100 in the city of Mount Airy, and this project has potential to add almost 50 people to those, to those roles. to those, uh, to those roles. Uh, the average wages for those positions is right at the county average, which is about forty-five and a, forty-four and a half. That's an average of all the positions. So you've got some that are just a hair below that, some that are just a hair above that. Um, but fifty new positions in the city of Mount Airy. And this is because the company is going through the acquisition of a competitor. Uh, that process was supposed to finish up last week, and I'll touch a point with the company tomorrow and make sure everything's still going well. But, um, they are, this is a competitive project where they could leave that work there, leave those machines there, leave those jobs where that competitor is at, or bring them to our community. In this case, you all are a part of trying to attract that investment and those jobs to this community. Um, again, like Chris said, about three and a half million dollars of investment, fifty jobs averaging at or above the county average wage. Good employer, been here for more than twenty-five years. Um, couldn't recommend this highly enough from the EDP's perspective, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, um, once we get down to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the numbers. Okay, I need to close the public hearing if there's no one else to talk. All right. Public hearing is now closed. Now, you've heard the numbers. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion to attract Project Freedom with incentive package.
Resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution with incentive package.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Marion, second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Next item I have, Mr. Chairman, um, Allen Industries Incorporated, they have applied for a signed permit on behalf of Hope Valley. Property located at one seventeen County Hall Road here in Dobson. Property zone rural agricultural, and that allows for one permanent freestanding identification sign, sign located at least fifteen feet from the property line. The sign shall not exceed six feet in height above ground level, and the display surface shall not exceed the forty-two square feet requirement. That's currently what's required. Hope Valley currently has one monument sign and one wall sign, both which exceed these amounts. However, these signs were placed on the property in nineteen ninety-nine, which, um, puts them in a grandfather's status because Countywide Assembly wasn't adopted until two thousand and one. There's also a proposed third sign, which is a small circular sign. You have photographs of these in your packet on another part of the building over a door. I believe that, sign of that, let's see. That new sign's round, and it's going to be located on one of the accessory buildings there on the property, just, uh, under the awning there of the roof, or I guess maybe attached to the awning. That's what's proposed. Otherwise, the proposed signage meets setback requirements. Um, why is this coming before the board? Well, Surrey County owns the property. In order to get the, uh, first two signs replaced, they have the right to replace those grandfather signs, as long as they're not any larger or the dimensions are the same. They do not have the right to place the third sign because it would be in violation of the ordinance, with the exception of granting, uh, getting a variance granted by the Board of Adjustment. So since you're the property owner, you would need to consent, uh, to the variance request before they could make application. They have the right to replace the two signs, the freestanding and the wall sign, because they are grandfathered. But the third sign would require your consent, and that would require action, Mr. Chairman.
It's just the, uh, little circular sign over the door.
They would have the right to apply for a variance. It would be up to the Board of Adjustment whether they would grant it. You're just, you're just giving them your consent as the landowner.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion for Hope Valley to replace their signs and give them consent to, for the Board of Adjustment. Go before the Board of Adjustment. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? Before you say it, it is not, uh, it's not a knee inflation sign.
I didn't say anything.
I will say in discussion, I know you hadn't asked yet, but Hope Valley provides a much-needed service in this community, and when you turn into County Hall Road over there, you don't necessarily know what's what. And it is good to see them want to recognize what's in each building so that when visitors come, they know whether they're going in the office building, a service building, or where it is they need to go, because it is confusing when you look. I think it's a needed option.
Any more discussion?
I'd say we ran on the ability, their variance request, and then they can take it to the next step, and they'll have our blessing.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Final item I have, and there's an updated boards and committees memo at your seats from the one in your packet, so I would want you to refer to this one. We have quite a few here. I'm going to read through them for you. Um, the Aging Planning Committee, these are three-year terms expiring. Uh, the three individuals listed there, Donna Collins, Gina Starbuck, Ginger Branyan, all agreed to serve if reappointed by the board. Uh, Animal Control Committee, uh, we have one vacancy. Uh, Commissioner Hyatt's been a member of that committee prior to being elected to the Board of Commissioners. She needs to step off that board and be replaced. Uh, Board of Equalization and Review, there's still the one vacancy there. Uh, previous referral declined to serve. Uh, Board of Health, Dr. Brooke Lowery, who's the dentistry seat, and Jerry Sawyers, who's the public chair, uh, both recommended to be reappointed to three-year terms expiring. Uh, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, there's one vacancy. Uh, Jody Southern was an application we received today. This is typically a referral from Surrey County Schools. That was a seat previously held, but held by Neil Atkins. He has since left and gone to another school system, so they're recommending Jody Southern fill that seat on the JCPC. Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, four-year terms expiring. Dr. David Shockley, current chairman, he would need to be reappointed if so, if the board so chooses. Recreation Advisory Committee, still, uh, these are two-year terms, still have two vacancies. Um, in the East District, two new applications were received, um, which are attached, uh, by Andrew, referred by Parks and Rec staff. And then finally, um, one vacancy on the Voluntary Agriculture District Board. Uh, we did receive an application today from Chad Bullington, referred by the Soil and Water Staff. Quite a few here. Um, you may want to work with them individually, Mr. Chairman.
All right. First, we have the Aging Planning Committee, uh, three-year term, agreed to re-up is Donna Collins, Gina Starbuck, and Ginger, Ginger Branyan. They have a motion.
I move this.
Motion by Commissioner Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Animal Control Committee, don't have anyone for that now?
Okay, at the very least, need to vote to, uh, accept, uh, Commissioner Hyatt's resignation.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next is the Board of Equalization and Review, one vacancy, three-year term. Do we have anyone for that yet? Okay. Uh, Board of Health, three-year terms expiring. Uh, Dr. Brooke Lowery and Jerry Sawyers have agreed to serve, and I believe Jody Southern wants to be appointed. Next one. Gordon. I don't have that.
For the Board of Health, both Brooke Lowery and Jerry Sawyers agree to be reappointed, and I'd make the motion that they both do. They both are integral parts of that board. I serve with him. I'd make that motion that they be reappointed.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. I'll second that. Any, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, my, my paper's different from yours.
There's the new one that was at your seat, updated one from today.
Okay. Which one are we on now?
Bottom, juvenile crime commission.
Okay, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one vacancy. Jody Southern has applied, and she's referred from Surrey County Schools to replace school-appointed seat previously held by Neil Atkins. I'll make the motion to appoint Jody Southern, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, two-year term.
I second that.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, four-year term expiring. Uh, Da- Dr. David Shockley has agreed to serve.
Chair, I'll make them. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We, I think we, we were both making it, that we reappoint Dr. David Shockley to a four-year term in Northern Regional Hospital.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, and I believe Commissioner-
I'll second that.
That, and any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Recreation Advisory Committee, two-year term, two vacancies in the East District. Two new applications reserved, received, referred by Parks and Rec staff.
One's Lindsey Harris.
Chad Bullington's about agriculture.
No, Stephanie Butner, isn't it?
Debbie Wilmouth.
How about the, uh, there's three here. Which ones of those has Daniel been in coordination with? The last two. Okay, since I represent the East District, I will make a motion that we appoint, uh, Stephanie Butner and, uh, also Lindsey Harris.
Debbie Wilmouth.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking, I've got three here. Okay, Debbie Wilmouth and Lindsey Harris.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next is the Voluntary Agricultural District. Um, got an application from Chad Bullington, three-year term. I'll make a motion, we accept that, Chad Bullington, for three years. I have a second. Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Commissioner Chairman, only other item we have is we do have a request for closed session for, um, county commissioners for legal and personnel.
Right, um, general county business. Mr. Tucker.
Uh, just, uh, thank everybody for being here that was, and some already gone, and several watching from other places. So I appreciate your participation in Surrey County Government, and, uh, as always, uh, it makes it more interesting when folks like you are willing to serve and willing to chime in and participate in county government. We thank you all. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, Mr. Goins.
Uh, just congratulations to the Safe Kids Surrey Coalition Coalition, and to all the students who were involved with artwork at the Health, uh, Health and Nutrition Center. Also to Laura Neely for her service to the county. Uh, we will miss you and appreciate the job you've done for Surrey County. Uh, I appreciate the board, uh, being patient with me. I'm out of town, but it's good to join you. Uh, we spent today at, uh, Kennedy Space Center, uh, at Cape Canaveral, uh, hoping to see a launch, but reminds me that we live in the greatest nation on earth, and, uh, the things that you see and the things that have been done in this country, i- it's amazing. And, uh, I appreciate all the work of our, our county staff, and I appreciate my fellow board members. Hope you have a good rest of the week.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to say condolences to Stephen Harris, his family. Um, he was a columnist for the Elkin Tribune. Um, tremendous individual. Uh, Stephen was killed in an accident, um, here about, um, well, this past week, and, um, um, he was run over, uh, crossing a street. Um, and he was just, um, outstanding individual, um, uh, touched a lot of people. Um, he was, um, a witty guy. He was a, a friend to everybody. He was just, um, tremendous, tremendous individual. He, uh, he and I tried every way in the world to find a kinship and a relationship, and, uh, uh, somewhere I know that's that's out there. He was a great guy.
Thank you, sir.
I'll echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners and also say thank you to Laura for all that you've done for the county. Look forward to continuing working for you. I'm sorry you found your way to the right side of the road. I think life's more fun over here on the left side, but we, I understand. I've been there with, with the children in the summer and all those things that go along with it, but we wish you the best of luck. Also, there, on a lighter note, there's a celebration on Saturday that I would invite the citizens to participate in down Commissioner Tucker's way, and that is that the Pilot Mountain Rescue Squad and AMS is going to be celebrating sixty years of service and sixty years of service to this community of saving lives. It's a great thing to celebrate. I'll be there. I hope that citizens and some of you will join me in thanking them for the work that they have done. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yes, one more thing. Uh, on the Invest in Surrey monies, we already had allocated those, and tonight in the consent, we released some others. There was one other request that was formally made in an application to the Shoals community folks. It's involving a serious need of a parking lot, uh, upgrade and, at the Shoals Community Building. It serves as the Ruining Club, several, uh, several events for the Shoals and greater surrounding communities to be able to have a public building to, uh, gather. And it also serves as one of our twenty-three designated Surrey County voting precinct sites, and we've gotten a lot of potholes and a lot of wear and tear, and that money was actually applied for by them officially in an application and approved in Invest in Surrey monies about, uh, last year's budget, but we've just now got the, they've just got the bids in, and the amount of money that they're asking for is seventeen thousand dollars. And I would like to use that as part of, uh, my East District, uh, bought, uh, Invest in Surrey dollars and see if I can get the board's approval. Uh, maybe instruct staff tonight to go ahead and prepare that, and at a later meeting, we will, uh, ask the board to approve that.
All right. Thank you, sir. I thank everyone for tuning in tonight. Uh, a lot, a lot going on, uh, a little bit of confusion, but, uh, we got through it. But, uh, I've had, um, I'm not, not going to end this on a good note, but, um, lost a lot of sleep here lately, and, uh, I need to get something off my chest. Um, concerning one of our departments in Surrey County. Carolina Public Press put a hit piece out on DSS, Department of Social Services in Surrey County. Um, they named two individuals from the department, but, uh, it reflected on the whole department. We've got a lot of good folks that work down there that bust their tails every day. Overtime, staying up all night, and kids that, uh, don't have a place to go, open up the office, sleep in the office. Uh, yes, it was a horrible, horrible tragedy that happened to that fourteen-year-old. Uh, unimaginable. Made me sick to my stomach. Know what that kid went through. But do you think that, uh, all of the, the social service workers don't feel that too? And all these Facebook warriors get on here, we keyboard warriors, sharing that post, sharing that article, and making comments. Horrible comments. We're not talking about people that live in Raleigh. We're not talking about people that live in Raleigh, Washington DC. We're talking about our families, our neighbors, their mamas and their daddies, brothers and sisters, they have children too. And they spend countless hours trying to help these people. Yes, the system's not perfect. And we're not going to save everybody. These people have a calling, they don't make much money. And it's been tough on them, they riding around with 20, 25 caseloads. And I talked to a fella today, Dustin Rogers, that made a post on Facebook. And I got his permission to use, to say something about his post, I talked to him today. And he opened the eyes of a lot of people if they'd just go and read that post. All these people making all these posts about social services. When you make these posts, do you know what it takes to fill out an intake form? Do you know what it takes to follow the guidelines, the rules, and regulations of the state? Yes, we've had the state in our offices for months. They want to talk about going against an investigation and stuff like this. How do you go against an investigation when you've got, go against the state when you've got them in your offices? People are on Facebook, and you don't know what you're talking about. They go out in the middle of the night to save a kid. I mean, it's, you know, it's like the sheriff's, sheriff's office, EMS, health department. They've got a calling. And I'm sorry to say sheriff's department can't save everyone. Some slip through the cracks. EMS. Imagine what a paramedic goes through when they go on a call and they can't save that person? Imagine the health department, they walk in and place. It's just hard to put calves in, much less human beings. Listen, I'll say it again, the system's not perfect. But Dustin had a good point. All you people sitting out there on Facebook that wants to make a comment and thinks you can do a better job than what these folks are doing. We have added 10 positions in the last few months for social services. And not all those positions are filled. So if you think you can do a good job, a better job, or whatever, fill out that application. We would love to have you. So, I've sat in the meetings with the state, county government, our local social services director. She walked in in a windstorm. I believe she'd been on her job about a month when all this took place. And they all have busted their cans every day to get this right. Sometimes it just don't work out. And I hate it that it don't. None of us are perfect, none of us sitting up here are perfect. There was only one perfect human that walked this earth. And I've said it, maybe I can get some sleep tonight. So, I'm sorry it come out the way it did, but we got some good folks that works in this county. Real good folks. And I wouldn't want to live nowhere else. I have a motion to go into closed.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I should go into closed.
All right, we're back in session and I'd like to make a motion to create a deputy county manager position at grade seventy-nine and add to the classification plan effective immediately and instruct the county manager to advise the position, advertise the position no later than September the first, twenty twenty-five and allow the county manager to name an interim until the position is filled. Interim finance officer until the position is filled.
I'll stay.
Interim finance officer, yes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Meeting's closed.